Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, December 3, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavell, President?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilwoman Sharlin.
I got you.
Yep. Councilwoman Smith?
My?
Want to do your proclamation?
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think I do, Erica. Oh, no, I'll check. I'll check. Well, before I ran for office, I heard of these women who were so strong and so amazing, and their proclamations are actually overdue. Will Arletta Scott Williams, Director Williams, please come forward? Now, if you know Director Williams, she's the executive director of the Alcasan Board, and she is just amazing. She has taken this with her team. You want to all come up? Yeah, you have to all come up. Look, she just says go, and you come. I'm begging them. Well, let me just tell you, she runs that like a well-oiled machine. I don't have to worry about anything. When I was first on the board there, I worried tremendously, but she does so many amazing things there and makes sure that she keeps a watchful eye over everything. And I just want to thank her for all the work that she does at Alcasan, but also what she has done for women. And I think showing her, she's one of the first and probably still one of the only female, black female directors, correct, of any authority in the city. And she's been around for a long time and knows how to show all of us how to run things just the way that they should be. So I can't say enough nice things about her and enough good things about her, but I can tell you that I can't imagine what Alcasan would be without her. Whereas, Arletta Scott Williams, a Pittsburgh native, earned her bachelor's degree in metallurgical engineering and material science from Carnegie Mellon University and began her career at U.S. Steel. And whereas, Ms. Williams joined Alcasan on February 27, 1984 as a shift engineer. By 1996, she was Director of Operations and Maintenance, a position in which she was responsible for the daily operations of the wastewater treatment plant, 85 miles of interceptor sewer lines, and almost 160 employees. In 1997, she concurrently served as the Deputy Executive Director. And whereas, in 1998, she made history as the first woman and African-American executive director of Alcasan. And under Ms. Williams' leadership, Alcasan grew to an organization of over 400 employees, which is the much sought-after place to work in the city of Pittsburgh, if you know Allegheny County. Six of the top 10 division directors reporting to her are women, one of whom is African-American. And whereas, Ms. Williams has received numerous accolades for her contributions over the years, including the Greater Pittsburgh Y WCA's Racial Justice Award in 2016 for business and professional services, the American Society of Civil Engineers Service to People Award in 2014 for her community impact, and the ESWP Metcalf Award in 2022. And whereas, she comes from a family of a strong public service tradition, including her late aunt, civil rights pioneer Thelma William Lovett, for whom the Hill District YMCA is named, her uncle Pappy Williams, Pennsylvania's first black ward chair, her uncle Jake Williams, who was the first African-American paymaster for Allegheny County, and her late father Frank A. Williams, a former Allegheny County Deputy Controller and Director of Property and Supplies for Allegheny County. That's so impressive, all that. And whereas, driven by her family's legacy of public service, Ms. Williams remains dedicated to advocating for diversity and inclusion in the workplace. Her commitment to these values has paved the way for future generations of leaders, ensuring that all individuals have the opportunity to thrive. She currently resides in the Penn Hills neighborhood with her son Tyler. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Arletta Scott Williams for her commitment to service and the diversification in the workplace. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 3, 2024 to be Arletta Scott Williams Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That seems so much and not enough. Sometimes when we're told to simplify prayer, we're told you can say, "Help," "Thanks," "Wow." If it hadn't been for the help and the thanks, there would be no 40 years of wow. Thank you. Thank you to this group. Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you to my many boards over the last 26 years who have been incredibly supportive. Thank you to you for listening to an old lady babble. Peace out. They want to know who you are.
All right. Good morning. I'm Kim Kennedy, the Director of Engineering and Construction at Alcasan.
I'm Jeanne Clark, Director of Governmental Affairs at Alcasan.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Byes, the Director of Environmental Compliance.
Good morning. I'm Mike Leshda, Director of Regional Convenance.
Suzanne Thomas, Chief Procurement Officer.
Good morning. Karen Fantoni, Director of Finance.
Good morning. Erica Lamar Motley, Manager of Scholastic Outreach and Educational Services.
Good morning. I'm Myra Prater. I'm Arletta's Executive Assistant.
Good morning. I'm Phil Cole, in charge of IT.
Morning, folks. I'm Doug Jackson, Director of Operations and Maintenance, and I'm also the Deputy Executive Director.
Let me just say, I'm so happy to have Arletta setting such a strong example for women in this region. But you actually set the bar high for all people, and you do a great job there, so thank you. Councilmembers want to come forward for a photograph? And then we're going to do one for Jeanne Clark from Alcasan next. up to you. You can sit down if you want while we're reading it. You can sit here on the bench if you want, or you can stand, wherever you're most comfortable. Now, if you know Jeanne Clark, you know we have two of probably some of the strongest women in this region here today between she and Arletta. And I just can't say enough of nice things about her. And Darla's here, too. Yeah, we're going to do Darla next. Well, you wait. You don't work for Alcasan. Never mind. You're on your own. No, I don't. No, just kidding. Yeah. Whereas, Jeanne K. Clark joined Alcasan in August 2014, serving as the Director of Communications. And whereas, in that position, she spearheaded transformative initiatives, including the Three Rivers Proud Awareness Campaign, the Clean Water Assistance Fund, and the Clean Water Plan, fostering trust and collaboration with government officials and the community, and inspired every Alcasan employee to have pride in their work. And whereas, in May of 2018, she assumed the newly created position of Director of Governmental Affairs, launching a robust engagement plan with staff and elected officials on the county, state, and federal levels, and directing the Municipal Relations and Outreach Program. Clark also serves as the primary point of contact with the philanthropic community. And whereas, I have to talk to you about that. And whereas, a native of Allegheny County, Clark currently serves on the Air Pollution Control Advisory Committee of the Allegheny County Health Department, on the Board of Directors for the Allegheny League of Municipalities and Friends of the Riverfront and the Feminist Majorities Political Action Committee. And whereas, Jeanne is a passionate advocate of women's rights, she has played a key role in the landmark legislation Violence Against Women Act, served nine years as an executive director of Allegheny Women's Center, and served as Chief Operation Officer of Anthony Stanton Engage, and was the National Press Secretary for the National Organization for Women. And whereas, Clark has received numerous awards throughout her career, including but not limited to the Greater Pittsburgh Y WCA's Tribute to Women Award for Civil and Community Service, and the Katherine Baker Knoll Award for Leadership, and the Zonta Award, am I saying that right?
Yes.
For Leadership for Women in 2024. She was awarded the prestigious Spirit of the Nineteenth Amendment Award. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Jeanne Clark for her commitment to public service and advocacy. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 3, 2024 to be Jeanne Clark Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
She's like a preacher. I can't take the mic away sometimes.
Well, I certainly want to thank Councilwoman Kail Smith, who's been one of my strongest supporters over the years, and none more so than when she's on the Board of Directors of Alcasan and listens to us all talk about sewers all the time. And I also want to thank all the members of Congress for co-sponsoring this. The last time I was in here to get a proclamation on behalf of an organization and work I did, one of the people on council was Eugene Jeep DePescuoli. And he refused to participate or agree to the proclamation, and we had to come in twice and finally won by a five-to-four vote that the National Organization for Women would be welcomed to the City of Pittsburgh. But he did call us Nazis, et cetera. And so, plus a change, plus a man shows. The more things change, the more they remain the same. But it has been wonderful to be able to always use my passion in employment situations and to really work for justice. And when I was so lucky that Arletta Scott Williams hired me to Alcasan, it was a different way of working for justice because we work for clean water every day and for the public health every day. And it was, she recognized in me something I didn't recognize in myself, which is that I could actually learn some of this stuff. And it has been just a really wonderful experience. And I knew of the Williams family and was so grateful to all of the work the Williams family had done over the years. And to work for one of the members of the Williams family was just such an incredible honor.
With.
That, with, with a member of the Williams family, excuse me. But it's been such an incredible honor to be at Alcasan and to be able to take our message to all the elected officials and the people in the community. So I'm very grateful. I'm a little upset that not only didn't I get a parade for Jeanne Clark Day, it's really bad that Arletta Scott Williams didn't get a parade. That would have been a great parade.
Super Pike, okay?
But again, so many thanks to all of you. And I just very much appreciate the work you do every day for the people of the City of Pittsburgh, and in Darla's case, for the people of Allegheny County. And I'm so happy to be part of this community. Thank you.
Do you all want to come up for the photo? Your sister want to come up for the photo?
Sure, Sherry.
Sherry.
Yeah.
Anyone else here for you?
All right. So this is a fun prock for me, also realizing that you have a relationship with Councilwoman Coghill. Of course you do, because you are in many churches and not...
All kinds of districts.
I want to claim you as my own, but I realize, like, Coghill's trying to claim you as his own as well. So it's, I don't know, we'll be able to fight over it. So today we're doing a proclamation for Stormy and Living Stones. So I'll read the proclamation, and then you can talk about it a little bit, if that's okay?
Sure. Whereas, Living Stones was established in 2012 as a Christian-based nonprofit organization with a mission to address two contrasting challenges in the City of Pittsburgh: food insecurity and food waste. And whereas, Living Stones works with local restaurants, businesses, and institutions to save surplus food, hindering waste, and transforming it into warm, nourishing meals for those in need. And whereas, Living Stones is driven to provide holistic support to individuals, not only physical hunger, but social and spiritual needs as well, offering an all-embracing approach to empowerment and wellness for every person they serve. And whereas, many people served by Living Stones reside in food deserts or are affected by food insecurity due to economic hardship, including unhoused individuals and seniors on fixed incomes. Whereas, Living Stone fosters connections among neighbors and strives to battle loneliness, creates sincere friendships, and provide a link between individuals and essential services. And whereas, by partnering with Mary Queen of Peace Parish in a shared commitment to address food insecurity within the community, Living Stones has expanded its mission to the south side of Pittsburgh. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does thank and commend Living Stones for their critical work in the Pittsburgh community. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 1, 2024 as Living Stones Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I was expecting you to say it.
I'll have the order.
First, thank you for this. It's an honor to have Living Stones to be recognized in the City of Pittsburgh and the work that we're doing. And although we heavily focus on meals and rescuing food from restaurants and institutions and serving it to people, our organization goes deeper than that. And we know our neighbors by name. We know their needs and their heartaches. And truly, our goal is to connect people to each other and with our volunteers and to the resources they need throughout the city. So, thank you.
And may we have Scott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, December 6, 2024 to be Kiwanis Club of Sheridan Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, November 29, 2024 to be Patricia Schnup Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be before City Council, and profanity is not permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, also Bucharest, Romania, University of Oxford, University of Pittsburgh, Global Information Intelligence Network.net, Global Intelligence Society candidate for president in 2028. We need a lot of people to do this right now because we're in trouble of despotism. Many more candidates right now. I have now put into place four initiatives, and the most recent, but also the most distant from 2012, it has to do with the child and to getting state governments to pass laws that put children first. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is, or it should be, a relationship between the child and provision of food, housing. In his 12 November 2024 Pittsburgh City Budget speech, Mr. Gany mentioned the child only a little, but he did mention a lot of things: bridges, streets, pavements, a lot. I have a question about that. Many of our children, yora, afrikan haza, citywide and countrywide cannot breathe, ye nufashi, properly, on an axis of congestion. Greater than 10% of Pittsburgh and non-Pittsburgh children of indigenous, African, and South American descent are deprived of oxygen, 65% of the body mass, a central chemical component for them, and they're doomed to inhale particulates which stimulate asthmatic obstruction. Consider Dr. Federica Pereira and also the CDC. Many cannot properly build body strength on an axis of digestion. More than 10% of our children of indigenous, African, and South American descent are deprived of protein, glutamate, glucose. This drives aggressive obesity. Dr. Neil Skolnik and the CDC as well. The Gany budget commitment to deal with breath obstruction and body obesity for our children, zero dollars. In 2015, I founded the Global Dome System, and I published that in June and presented that to Gany with no response. My position is that we need to spend $100 a month on children who are five and under age. That would lead to $15 million to $17 million a year, and I think that our children are worth it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ralph Williams.
Hi, yes, hello. Thank you, President Lavell, members of council. I want to personally apologize for the last two times I was supposed to be here. The one time that was on me. The second time, I didn't get the invite until way late after you guys were done with the public comment, so I couldn't make it on. But I do apologize for not being on air when you called my name last couple of times. I want to compliment Bob Sharlin, Councilwoman Sharlin, who's my councilman, for his efforts when he had the hearing with the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh. I really appreciate your questions that you asked, cast your opinion, and I really appreciate what you did at the hearing there. And also Anthony Coghill as well, for what he's been doing with the budget hearings and the public safety stuff. But my main reason today for being here is I want to talk about the zoning thing. You know, it's okay to have these homeless people in schools and nursing homes and things like that. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the Villa de Marilic. I don't have a problem with the MacDoctor School. I have a problem with those tents set up all over the place in different communities. That's a problem. And you need to, before the year ends, I know December 15, you're nipping this homeless stuff in the butt, but it's got to be nipped even more. All right? And I hope that with this new budget, and even though there's a cut in police, I hope that the chief gets put in, an official chief, and I hope that the city going into the new year has decided to do a little bit better than what they have been doing. Okay? And a lot of things, such as the police, such as the homeless, such as things. Also, there is homeless people once again under the Wyndham Street Bridge, right by Couples Stadium. There was a fire over there. They have also gone and taken the copper roofing off of the church over there that serves progies. That needs to be taken care of. Somebody needs to do something about that yet again. Block that off or do something. Because those people that make those progies, that's a fundraiser for their church, and they can't make them if there's going to be problems over there with the homeless again over there under the Wyndham Street Bridge. All right. I want to thank you for letting me speak today. Everyone have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is John Hanrahan.
Good morning, council. Hello, my name is John Hanrahan. I am a resident of Fineview in Council District One, and I'm here to talk a bit about, oh, what number bill is this? Bill 1284, which I believe it is your intention to introduce today. This is a bill regarding the Inclusionary Zoning Program. I have a lot of questions about this bill. I think there are a lot of contradictions, and I think it's a poorly laid out bill. And my main questions are, first of all, I mentioned contradiction. This bill puts a really strong emphasis on assessing, on any neighborhood where there's inclusionary zoning, we need individual assessments for each neighborhood every five years. And I think being data-driven is smart and wise. However, it is contradictory to me that this bill, it doesn't seem to follow the recommendations of our most recent actual housing needs assessment in 2019, which found that the greatest need, the widest supply gap, was for households making less than 30% of the area median income, very low households. And that is why currently our IC policies target below 50% AMI, again, very low income. This new bill... our IZ policies target below 50% AMI, again, very low income. This new bill opens it up to up to 120% of AMI. And again, the housing needs assessment from 2019 found that there is currently no supply gap for those ranges of incomes between 50 and 120% of the AMI. So this bill is not fixing an existing problem in that way. Second question is about neighborhood adoption, this idea that neighborhoods will adopt inclusionary zoning on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. We have no way to do this currently. We have some neighborhoods that have RCOs, some neighborhoods do not. We do not have uniformed neighborhood councils. We do not have regularly scheduled neighborhood town hall meetings. Would this be by referendum? Would this require the setting up of a new sort of elected or non-elected community board for each neighborhood so that neighborhoods could then adopt IZ? And further, as written, this seems to suggest that it would eliminate IZ as it currently exists in Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, Polashell, and Oakland. Would this bill force those neighborhoods to reapply and then through some unknown mechanism, adopt IZ? Another question, what is the basis for the dollar amount in the $50,000 IZ opt-out? Where does that dollar amount come from? It's not quite clear. Why is the timeline of IZ affordability reduced from 35 to 20? That's a huge change. Are we that far along in our journey towards producing so much affordable housing that it's really not that much of a problem? It can take 15 years off the timeline? I don't think so. I'd love some explanation of that. And finally, the idea of this...
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to make comment, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in Katy, we're at Irving, that's at the top of Bedford. That's the senior citizen home. Usually I'm coming down and I start off, I'm usually complaining, but today I wanted to come and say thank you. Thank you for celebrating with us, and that will be the police and volunteers that brought dinners up to the senior citizen home on Thanksgiving Day. Now, I've been living there for about 10 years, and there was, the last time I came down, there was a white lady, and I tell you white, so I want you to know, she was the last one that spoke, and she was saying where she lived at, how she would be cleaning, and she'd come home and there's trash and everything, how the trash would accumulate around where she lived at. Well, Mercer, where we live at, that's where the trash comes down, right down at the bottom of where we tried to go to get the center. And then the people would park their cars, and they would drop food outside their cars. The weeds grew almost as tall as me, but I would go every morning to get a newspaper. So them animals would be jumping out. I almost fell a couple of times, but I had my cane. So then I started cleaning. I took and dug all the weeds out, and I went all around the whole, all the four streets. I say that because I was fussing about the mayor. Now, the mayor came up last year and brought a proclamation to Reggie Howes, who was Salud Dean, who used to be a councilman here, his brother. I couldn't understand, how did he know about this man cleaning up in front of August Wilson and then to buy a plaque? So I believe that right don't wrong nobody. If I have a question, and I felt that it would embarrass him, I went to the mayor. I said to the mayor, can I have a meeting with you? He said, oh, yeah, yeah, you. Okay, so then I tried. I said this, I'm here every Tuesday and Wednesday, and I will come. She said, I couldn't get the appointment. But what I'm trying to say, I want you to understand, is how did he know about Salud Dean's brother? And I asked him. Okay, now, they caught the mayor out there the other day. I mean, the people from North Side, they surrounded him. And he said he didn't come to the meeting because his, the councilperson has to tell him he can come. So Mr. Lavelle, did you tell him to come up there and give him August, I mean, give him a plaque for cleaning up in front of August instead of in front of where we live at? He just moved into the building. The reason why I'm saying that, you give proclamation, just like the water, I mean, you got boxes of them, but to buy a plaque for it, he ain't even been here a whole year. And just because he's Salud Dean's brother, Salud Dean is now on the board, which I didn't think that he should have been. I felt that he was a turncoat. When he left here, he was making about 55 or 65,000, and you gave him a job of 79,000 you made for him.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. How's everybody? How was your holiday? It was good. Mine was too. There's an Italian bakery in Moreville called Moyos. I hope I'm saying it right. They make Moyos. Am I saying it right? They make the most awesome key lime pie. If anybody in the world, I hope somebody seen me, in Moreville, they make the most awesome key lime pie. Let me pray. Lord, thank you for my health and my strength and being the source of my salvation. In Jesus' name, amen. Lavelle, are you oppressing me? I think you are. I just discovered you are on the board of the Carnegie Library, you're on the board of the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust, and you're on the board of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. In the Carnegie Library, every time I go there, there's a microphone that comes up on my screen. So somebody is listening to everything that I say. So you know what I do? I start singing, "What you gonna do when they come for you?" Because anybody that's evading my privacy that way, I know I'm not the only one there doing that too. So we're going to find out who it is. At the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust, I'm a female vocalist. I've been to every last Free Live Jazz concert without the, at least 10 or 12, I'll say, since 2023, when they were outside in the summer. I've been out there. I've given every musician that has come, at least one or two of them, a playlist. Haven't been able to collaborate with any of them. I'm being blocked. Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership as well. I've tried several times to get on that stage, to send them a video. My videos are being blocked. My communication is being blocked. Really? I know you know something about it. I know you do. I know you do. Let me ask you this. When they had the Soul Food Festival in Marcus Square, why is it that the DJ was drunk and asleep on stage? I know you know about that too. Don't say you don't. Mosley, you're always having a smirk on your face. Yesterday, I went to your Smithfield Roots location and tried to eat. I could not. The smell in there from body odor was unbearable. It was unbearable. I couldn't eat there. These people need to clean with bleach. You have a bathroom nobody has access to. But there's one woman that does. Her name is Dora. Dora walks around with weak old urine on her body. And when she comes in the building, the whole building explodes.
Thank you very much.
We're going to pray for her. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jamie Marie Christian. I'm the founder and executive director of an organization called Let Us Turn With The Beat Sustainability Collective. And I'm also an urban farmer. I started an indoor urban farm last year called Gypsy Tea and Herb Company. We grow medicinal culinary herbs. And we are the first farm to get a farm number from the new FSA office in the City of Pittsburgh. I'm here today to, oh, I have a lot of issues with the organizations. Well, not all of them, but a good majority of the organizations that were chosen to receive funding from the Tier Two Food Justice Fund, which most of you know me here because I've been here for years, the past two years, talking to you, probably down here more than anybody else. And I originally just came down because, I didn't want to speak because I don't know that I can't refrain from saying profanities because it's so upsetting because of the things that I know. But I'd be happy to share them with each and every one of you in private. It's not something that I want to share publicly, but it is all the truth. But what I wanted you to see is the face of exhaustion. Somebody who works almost 24 hours a day, three jobs, running my nonprofit, which I don't get paid for, growing, which I don't get paid for right now, and doing contract work to make it up. My grant application, my organization's grant application, I want to tell you about that too. We were working with United Fields to help them get set up with passive income streams to help their revenue because they weren't getting any revenue with their partnership with CKP. And we'd be putting franchise meat counters in every single district except for maybe Councilwoman Strasburgers. I'm sorry, there's not enough food apartheid in your area for you to, yeah. But, yeah, we were working with New France Brewing to put in a free farmer's market where they wouldn't have to pay fees, where we would supplement their gas to get them there. Because that's what really, why farmers can't get to the city markets. And then we were working with River City Growers and Future Farms where they're creating a cold, value-added kitchen in Lawrenceville with also supplemental funds for access to get farmers from the East End and from the North Side over there to make value-added products to sell, and food stalls as well. In addition to the store that we are trying to open in Carrick, that would have a full-service butcher shop with an apprenticeship program with United Fields. But we were not, and our ask was $83,000. $83,000, 52 of it would have went to us. Like, $12,000 would have went to Hazelwood, and the rest, $23,000 would have went to River City. So I know you all don't get to see those applications, but I want to give you some perspective because I'm not the only organization in this position. So, thank you very much for your time and space. As always, I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilwoman Sharlin.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Councilwoman Sharlin presents Bill Number 1284, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances Title IX, Zoning, Article III, Overlay Zoning Districts, Chapter 907, Development Overlay Districts, to amend Section 907.04 IZO, Inclusionary Housing Overlay District, Article IV, Planning Districts, Chapter 910 Downtown Districts, to amend Section 910.01 GT Golden Triangle District, Article V, Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, to amend Section 911.04 Use Standards, and Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 915, Environmental Performance Standards, to amend Section 915.07 Performance Point System.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1265, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements to Absoil Medical Corporation for Heart Monitor and Defibrillator Maintenance and Warranty Services at a total cost not to exceed $788,054 over five years.
And that takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1266, Resolution Amending Resolution 52 of 2024, Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Innovation, Performance, Finance, and Public Safety to Enter into an amended agreement with B3 Solutions, Inc., for the Continued Provision of Software Maintenance and Support Services for Critical Applications and Transition Guidance by Extending the Contract for One Year until December 31, 2025, and No Additional Cost to the City. The amended total cost not to exceed of the contract will now be $2,129,321 over a period not to exceed eight years. And Bill Number 1267, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with E+ Technology, Inc., for Network Support Services to Include Implementing, Optimizing, and Maintaining the Citywide Network, total cost not to exceed $45,000 over one year.
And Councilwoman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kael Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kael Smith presents Bill Number 1268, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Four Organizations to Support Large-Scale Investments in Pittsburgh's Food System as Part of the Food Justice Initiative's American Rescue Plan Act Allocation at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $1,100,000 over Two Years.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
She didn't want to.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1269, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Cliff Job Consulting, LLC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,000 over One Year for Expert Witness Services in Connection with Ongoing Litigation. And Bill Number 1270, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 723 of 2022, Effective December 27, 2022, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 Through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Sports Facilities by $100,000 and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $100,000.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yes, I'd like to weigh the rules of council, waive Rule 8, so that Bill 1270 appears on tomorrow's Standing Committee's agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1270 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1271, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements or the Use of Existing Agreements with the Pittsburgh Public Schools for the Purpose of Renovating the Playground on PPS Own Property Known as Westwood Park, where Westwood pre-K through five school resides at a total cost not to exceed $100,000. Bill 1272, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement, Agreements, and/or Amendments with the River Life for the Purpose of Establishing a Level of Service Agreement Impacting City Own Riverfronts, Including Riverfront Trails and Adjacent Lands at No Cost to the City. And Bill 1279, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 863 of 2018, Effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Play Area Improvements by $184,000 and Increasing Complete Streets by $184,000.
I'd like to motion to waive Rule 8 on 1271 so we can discuss tomorrow. Thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1271 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Nonused Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1273, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnances Title X, Building, Chapter 1004, International Property Maintenance Code Adoption, by Adopting the 2021 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and With the Amendment Specified in Section 1004.05 of the City Code, as well as Making Certain Amendments to the Existing Language of Chapter 1004 of the City Code.
And on behalf of myself...
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1274, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended November 27, 2024. Bill 1275, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a Donation to the Department of Public Safety from the Pittsburgh Zoo in the Form of Trees and Tree Planting Equipment for an Event at Frick Park, Value Not to Exceed $2,261.06. Bill Number 1276, Communication from Sean Fertitta, Interim Executive Director of the Oakland Business Improvement District, Submitting Finalized 2023 Auto Reports Completed by Mar Dusel.
submitting finalized 2023 auto reports completed by Mar Dussel. And Bill Number 1277. Communication from Sally Stedelman, manager, Pittsburgh Land Bank, submitting the Pittsburgh Land Bank's third quarter financial report for the year 2024.
Thank you. We need a motion to receive and file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to unfinished business, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 1260. Reported a committee on finance and law for November 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1192. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of enterprise mobility doing business as enterprise rental car in an amount not to exceed $6,692.51 over one year in full in final settlement of a claim for damage and business loss of use of a rental vehicle from an accident with a city ES vehicle on Bigelow Boulevard on November 18, 2023. Bill 1248. Resolution further amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the proposed 2024 Community Development Program, and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by increasing design, construction, and inspection services by $75,000 to account for federal highway administration funding being received at no cost to the city."
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1261. Reported a committee on public safety and wellness for November 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1187. Resolution amending Resolution 334 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the director of public safety to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with Julata for software subscription-based client relations management services by increasing the total not to exceed amount by $64,451.72 for a new total not to exceed amount of $204,431.72 over three years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received the legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1262. Reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for November 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1195. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR Maguire, Inc. for project design management services and reviews in connection with various city of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering phase, increasing the total not to exceed amount to $3,711,256.73 and net increase of $10360.10 reimbursable at 95%. Bill 1206. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Children's Way in Allegheny Square East in the neighborhood of Allegheny Center, 22nd Ward, be paved with asphalt from origin to terminus in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill 1250. Resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design and construction phases of the Safe Roots to School Program and providing for the reimbursement of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed $420,000, an increase of $75,000 from the previously executed agreement, federally reimbursable at 100% and the municipal share of the Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $0.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1263. Reported a committee on land use and economic development for November 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1198. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement and/or contract with the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the purpose of utilizing an AmeriCorps Vista in the Department of City Planning cost not to exceed $15,000 over one year. Bill 1199. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with an I design for the creation and installation of public art in the Beachview Neighborhood cost not to exceed $90,000. Bill 1200. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with Shift Works Community Plus Public Arts for the management of a competitive process and distribution of city of Pittsburgh allocated funds for the creation and installation of public art along the University Line Corridor at a total cost not to exceed $185,000. Bill 1201. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with Yoga Motif for the creation and installation of public art in the Hill District Neighborhood cost not to exceed $90,000. Bill 1209. Resolution further amending Resolution 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Sheridan United Methodist Church by $7,000, St. Andrews Lutheran Church by $2,505, Neighborhood Economic Development by $4,329, and Higher Achievement, Inc. by $10,500, and increasing Pittsburgh Hires Veterans by $4,500, Storehouse for Teachers doing business as the Education Partnership by $5,500, Brookline Meals on Wheels by $4,329, Friendship Circle by $2,500, and Brothers and Sisters Emerging by $4,000, and YMCA Homewood by $4,000 in authorized subsequent agreements." Bill 1210. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing City View Church by $5,500 and increasing St. Michael's Food Bank by $5,500 in authorized subsequent agreements." Bill 1211. Resolution further amending Resolution 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Sheridan Community Council by $2,700 and increasing Neighborhood Community Development Fund on behalf of the Northside Chronicle by $540, Northside Youth Athletic Association by $540, Open Field by $540, Pittsburgh High Ground Foundation by $540, and Allegheny YMCA by $540 in authorized subsequent agreements." Bill 1212. Resolution further amending Resolution 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by reducing prevention point by $5,000 and increasing Brookline Meals on Wheels by $5,000 in authorizing subsequent agreements."
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bills, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1264. Reported a committee on innovation, performance, asset management, and technology for November 25, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1188. Resolution amending Resolution 414 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to adopt an existing government agreement through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program and to enter into any related agreement or agreements and amendments thereto as necessary with Karasov Technology Corp. for Google Cloud subscription services, Google Assured Workloads to provide secure storage for sensitive data on the city's cloud platform, and to add astronomer cloud scheduling, tools, training, and installation services by increasing the approved amount by $6,870,384 for an amended total cost not to exceed $11,469,208.38 over eight years. Bill 1189. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a start-up participation agreements with selected entities as part of the cohorts of PGH Lab and further authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab at a total cost not to exceed $100,000 over one year. And Bill 1190. Resolution amending Resolution 848 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Innovation and Performance, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Rec Desk LLC to provide permitting and scheduling enterprise software by increasing the approved amount by $72,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $96,500 over four years. Bill 1227. Resolution amending Resolution 845 of 2023, which authorized an agreement or agreements with Essenture to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and related capabilities and processes by increasing the approved amount by $585,755.33 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,95,755.33 over three years. Bill 1228. Resolution amending Resolution 903 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works and the director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Cordograph, now doing business as OpenGov, Inc. to meet the needs of the city of Pittsburgh by increasing the approved amount by $80,644.40 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,843,794.52 over 10 years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make a motion to, I should have done so earlier, on 1268 to waive the rules of council so appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Bill 1268 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Anything else for members? If Councilwoman?
I just want to say real quickly that I was going to hold that, not do the Rule 8, but because time is of the essence right now because they need to get information, contracts over to the Controller's Office. That's why we're waiting, but I hope that we have a really robust conversation about the Food Justice Fund tomorrow. Thank you.
Absolutely. If nothing else, we do have a series of, a number of meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1 o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Bill 1269 as relates to litigation. Also this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Human Resources and the Pittsburgh Partnership. Then Wednesday, December 3, at 9:30, council will hold a pre-agenda interview for the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. And at 10 a.m., council will hold our regular Standing Committee meeting to speak at these meetings. Please fill the sign-up form or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also tomorrow at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for the Urban Redevelopment Authority, Housing Opportunity Fund, and Pittsburgh Land Bank. Then on Thursday, December 4, at 10 a.m., council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Public Safety and the Fire Bureau. Then on Thursday, December 4, at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for Department of Public Works. And then on Friday, December 5, at 10 a.m., council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Parks and Recreation. And lastly, Friday, December 5, at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1148 relative to the naming of the gym in the Rine Brex Center to the Marcello Gym. Speaker's seat reservation will close at 12 o'clock today. To speak, please fill the sign-up form or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. With that, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.